Has everybody been able to look at the minutes for the January eighth meeting? If so, and there's no objections, we'd like a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. You know what we forgot to do? A roll call.
We did.
Let's do a roll call.
James Hamilton.
Here.
Wayne Bryan.
Here.
Ron Charum.
Here.
Greg Murray.
Here.
Justin Ork Torrey.
Here.
Brock Ellis. Steve Corr.
Alrighty, now that we have the roll call and then we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, all opposed by the same, motion carries. Alright. We don't have any old business, uh, we do have old business, consideration of the final plat for Ashton Place cottages. Steve, you wanna give us the rundown?
You have drawing sets here of the Ashton Place master plan as well as the cottages. If you'll look, you'll see on Jason Garrett's worksheet which is in front of A one oh one, it shows the cottages that are going in in the first construction we've already looked at and where the cul-de-sacs will be. These are the temporaries and if you look at the rest of this, you'll see the master site plan. On the left hand, lower left hand side, you'll find the unit type and the key plan legend. You'll find exactly how many total beds in this project here is two hundred and thirty-three. That's the size. Now, if you look at each one of these that follow, if you remember Eli talked us about the construction and what they used and how they use it and what the standards are. And at this time, I would like to let Eli Mooney have the floor and let him tell you what you're looking at here because you need to look at each one of these as you go through. And one oh one is the first sheet and it is Studio three unit town home.
Before you start.
Yes, sir.
We got the pistol here. Let me get the mic.
Or I can talk loud. Here, I tell you what would be better. If I can sit with Justin over here, I can just use his mic.
There you go. Yeah, that'll work. Yeah, just sit there with.
Scoot it over a little bit.
You don't buy, right?
No.
Something I forgot.
So, one question before we get started. That I had, and I, we can address it later if you'd like, but on the, the street naming, my intention is to carry the street names over from the left existing subdivision, which would be Fairbanks and Yukon. And Jason has them drawn to just continue into the site. If you wanna look at Reed or something different, I mean, that's gonna be up to you. Our owners don't care what those names are. I don't know that Rick does either.
What'll happen is Shannon will probably, Wapadity will look and see if it doesn't add to confusion or anything.
Yeah, she's okay with it as long as you are.
She was, we're not, we're not gonna reinvent wheels, okay?
Yes, sir. Understood. Understood. So, obviously everything that's grayed out is for future phasing. Uh, far left going to, uh, just before the two thirty units is gonna be this current phase. This current phase will be fourteen buildings, thirty units in total. The four plans that we're looking at that are are gonna be a, a three unit town home, four unit town home, a two bedroom, and then a house of three. And so that's what the following sheets are gonna be. So, A one eight or A one oh one, we're looking at the, the Studio three unit town home. So, we're gonna have five of these on this site.
What's, what's the distance between the units again? Between each unit? So, you got a set of three and a set of three. What's the distance between those two units?
Do you know that off the top of your head?
Cause I know there's a walkway in between them. Isn't that right? Yeah.
Like right there.
It's sidewalk width right there.
Yeah, sidewalk width with a little bit on each side, is that right?
Yeah, so you're, I see some green area and stuff. I, I'm not certain exactly what that is. I'd say we're at least ten.
There's, there. Okay.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the width of the parking places and so if you got a ten foot, yeah, fifteen probably is.
Okay.
That one may be.
Yeah, and then I know Rick was talking to you earlier, but, so these are gonna be separated instead of doing like a, the plan's called for a one hour firewall, but these are gonna be, uh, the ICF concrete. So, there'll be a, a four, well, these are gonna be a six inch concrete wall separating the units. Steve, you can go through each of these plans with the group.
Look, they look really nice.
They are. The thing that I've noticed about them is, uh, the efficiency units that are here. You got, uh, how many town homes in the first run?
The, uh,
Three U, three Studio threes.
These are, uh, three unit town homes.
Okay, you got, when you did the, uh, the ones that, uh, Farmington? Is that, is that yours? There's somebody up there that's using the same again. One oh two, uh, A one oh two.
That's gonna be the same as the three, but it's gonna be a four unit town home. So, this is gonna be the same as the three, but adding an additional unit onto it, so it'll be a four unit.
Did you say your plans called for a one hour firewall?
I think it was, it called for a two, but the wall we're building is a four.
It is, it's, it's, it's shown as a one on here.
Is it on there? Cause I think on the the spec sheet when I was looking at it with Jason, I was almost sure it was a two.
Yeah, he's got it showing in one hour fire rated wall between each unit, nine inch total thickness ICF blocks. That'd be your six inch ICF wall.
That is a, that is a four hour wall. It's a little more expensive, but it's way faster. The weather doesn't destroy it. When we build them out of sheet rock, half the time we gotta tear them out, redo them.
So, Steve on A, A one oh four showing a one bedroom, we don't have any of those.
Then they need to fix their plan. None in this go around?
Not, none in this go around. We've got the A one oh five, that's gonna be. That's gonna be the two bedroom unit.
Where the, uh, okay, now. One oh six is the caretaker and that's the.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that'd be the, the house of three via four bedroom.
So, which one is it showing a one hour, a one hour wall?
Uh, I was looking on the town homes.
The exception for the.
Three and four beds.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to change that.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that. Tommy'll have, Tommy's working that in. See what we gotta add.
Well, I, I talked to Rick about this afternoon and he said. He said, he said, well, bottom line, he said, you're gonna build it however Chief Sizemore says.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's what Rick said. And I said, you're exactly right. That's what we're gonna do. But if that's the case. And I can, but I can, Jason. Yeah, I can have him change those rules, really.
And he's gonna have all that paperwork tomorrow.
Oh, exactly.
We'll prove this until it changes, right?
Yeah, the biggest thing they're, they're looking for is, one, we've got, we've got the site done. Then we get the answer on the. The one question that I had over in the, the C Street, optional C Street. C is existing. In fact. Dead end down there, it's a dog bone. Question I had would be heard of Tommy about whether or not you wanna have, uh, fire access. Whether is a real access or we have a B and a C access from a fire standpoint. What I'm thinking about when you have to, when you're coming in from this is Stroger Lane. So, you'll have two here? Two here, funnels to one. And then there should be one. Crosses here. Here. Coming out of the main building. Okay, that's off the main, yeah. Yes, sir. Okay. That way if this gets blocked, we can still come in this way. Well, my question, they have the optional C Street, well, they'll be getting C Street shown. And my question was from a fire standpoint, if you had a, either a gated access or a fire access only, were you in, something went haywire? Well, more access is always better.
I saw, I saw a bad idea.
Because that would let you, and the other thing is the convenience of the moving. If you're the, if, if you're doing the, operating the moving. Moving truck guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good point. That's a problem every one of these we build, they get in.
This, this is thirteenth street.
Right.
And what you would do is you'd let B in here, C is down here.
Right.
And, uh, A Street, there's, the dog bone is, is a swamp.
Yeah.
Uh, west of there, you'd never get in that.
Right.
But that is something to think about and, and, you know, it's old. Lot of.
I think that's not a bad idea to have a gated access for fire.
From a security standpoint.
To me, I, you, you'd have a back way out. Or in if you had to.
If you had to.
Yeah, that's. But like you said, it, you know, you start bringing in moving vans or something like that.
You're gonna need the back way in. Cause it's gonna.
You wanna avoid as much as you can.
So, on this current phase, Steve, pending the firewall specs, do you see any other issues or questions with this?
Biggest thing we have to do, even, even though the fireproof construction is, is the hydrant placement and that always, there is a, let me think now. There is a hydrant between, is Joe's between B and C?
B and C, yes.
Yeah, there's a hydrant there. Uh, the, the issue always is with hydrants is you wanna try to have a, a, a street or an alleyway, an access way to minimize how many obstacles you have to negotiate when you're pulling, when you're pulling holes. And, uh.
When, when we get ready to build out these next phases, we go, um, there'll be, you know, full utility plans and stuff and we'll be, we'll be adding hydrants.
Yeah, and, and this is most important because we've, we've had a couple of places that the placement, we had to go back and get it right for the fire system and the distances. And what is it, six hundred five now? So, you have to, you have to have a route to lay down. So, be thinking, you know, be thinking about where you wanna place them and how you wanna run. I'm not gonna tell you guys how to do the, the, uh, your design, that's what your engineers are paid for, but I can tell you from personal experience that you wanna try to get it to work.
Yes, sir. On the current phase?
On the current, but not on, and not.
Noting that, yeah, cause we're not drawing that yet.
So, this part we're good with and all that, right?
I wish they'd get the ready, rest of this ready for us. We can just build it all at one time. But they won't, yes. It's a lot easier to build it all at one time.
What's their timeline on a full completion? Do they have one yet?
I don't know if they do. They want this done yesterday, but I don't know if they even started drawing the rest of this.
I think we wanted it done yesterday too.
So does Rick. Well, before, about a month ago, they were like, we don't know if we'll ever do that, all this stuff. And then I think I told, told y'all that the owners came down, me and Rick spent two and an hour showing them what else going on in Barling and what's happening here and how we're, how Ashton's a block away from that, you know, it's, and once they saw that, they were all about it. You know, so, and that was the guy that writes the checks, so. Shouldn't get him on our side.
Always good when the check writer's on your side.
We would much rather build here than five hours away from home. I mean, somewhere.
Alright, so on this, the only thing that we need to, to change is the, the firewall.
And Tommy, y'all have got, I asked you a question. I'll have the information tomorrow. Regardless, if the print say one hour, that's gonna have to be fixed.
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah.
No, we can't do anything with that. That's easy, that's easy, I have Jason.
And let me tell you, Wayne is in the middle of a firewall episode that he and I and Joe are on this conversion up at, uh, Mercy Crest and they're converting it from one type of care facility to another and that is a nightmare digging through all the stuff that's out there. But that's, other, other than that, I'm, I'm open to any. This is the time to let it air out of what stuff we need to do or what you need from us. The only other thing I, I can remember, years ago, there was a mean strip, you know, you know about mean strips, right? Well, when they built the subdivision over there that's A, got A, B, C, and D, there was, they, the man that developed it was Coleman and he kept on the west side of the ditch, near your side, a one foot strip called a mean strip. Cause he didn't get money to pay for that access of that road. And there were several mean strips and they're not law, they're not legal anymore. You can't have them. But he ran into one, we ran into one when the house up behind Jerry Davenport's uh, little home was redoing it and he found out he had to pay a fee for a mean strip. Now, the city doesn't have to pay, but the contractor did. So, you need to make sure you read about that because when they built the grade school, the elementary school, that mean strip was still there. However, under whatever law it was, they didn't end up paying for the mean strip for the city, for the street and the grade school access. And there's some quirks in the laws and I'm not a lawyer, but you, you need to know about that, that it's there, okay? But you, but in, in terms of extending the, the strip, my take is it probably, uh, Buddy Coleman would stop and say, you know, hey, it's done, but I don't know that. I can, it's easy to spend somebody else's money, okay? Uh, that's just the way, but, but you need to re know that it was there and it is shown. In fact, we didn't know it and, uh, I can't remember who told us, but anyhow, I went and found it and it shows up on the property records at the assessor's office. So, you need to go, and you, if you need to look at it, you need to go to Greenwood. Take a look. And, uh, you may have to explain to the clerk down there. The long-term clerks know, but it's like everything, everybody retires or knowledge goes away.
Anybody got anything for them they wanna make a comment on? I mean, it looks good. Uh, we're not gonna take a vote on it until we get the one hour fire break changed on the paperwork, so.
Is that something that we're gonna submit for next month's meeting or is that something?
We can, yeah.
For next week and just sit down with you guys in the office and.
If we need to have a special meeting to do it, we can have it.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody, everybody's around here where we can, we can get here and
Is that something that we, we can conditionally approve for? For that or does that work?
For this, I don't think we can, you know, we can't put, if we were to approve it, I don't think we could put it on condition that something gets changed because it's gotta be written on there.
Sure. I got a pen.
We understand that.
Yep.
Pencil.
So, I, I, how fast can y'all get that changed?
Tomorrow. I'll, I'll hear from Chief Sizemore.
He'll, he'll have to, he will have to actually prove the rating of that wall.
I don't think it has to go.
No, I understand.
I, I'm thinking we should have these changes completed by the end of this week, Steve.
Yeah, and he can.
I know they're pushing to get started pretty quick. I don't wanna inconvenience anybody by any means.
Hey, um, if everybody's okay with it, if y'all, if y'all could do it next Tuesday, we'll just come in here at five o'clock on Tuesday. We'll have a special planning commission next Tuesday at five P M. before the board meeting and we'll just. Yeah, we'll just do it.
That's the thirteenth.
Yeah, the thirteenth. And, uh, y'all get us the paperwork and everything and we'll, we'll throw a vote out for it, so.
What time you wanna have that?
Uh, five P M. Is that okay? Is that good with everybody? That'd be before the board of directors meeting.
That's good. And by some off chance that we run into a snag or something, I'll be sure to call Ms. Kim and let her know.
Okay.
To, to call it off, but you should be able to do that, no problem. I appreciate, appreciate you guys doing that.
No problem.
We appreciate you guys building in Barling.
Glad to be here.
Not on that other town to the west of us, so this.
How long have we been in Barling, Alan? I think we've completed our last nine projects in a row in Barling.
This one, it's been, what, two and a half years we've been pushing to get this? We, we wanted to do this one for a long time.
This one's looking nice. That really looks nice right there. Steve, do we have any new business? Do we have plans for H Street or is that, or update on H Street?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Let me, let me tell you, we've got a, uh, so you'll know, we have a couple of, a couple of meetings to go to and I went to one today about out at Chaffey and, uh, none of this is coming up to us, but, uh, they're getting ready, it looks like the end of February. I'm speaking for them out of their estimate on, uh, the big warehouse out here and making a deal. The other thing is, uh, we worked on the drainage to get it right over on, uh, the three story apartments that are out there across from the radio station. I think we got that one whipped. And, uh, let me think, uh, I'll refer to Wayne Bryan, Wayne can tell us what's going on up at Mercy Crest.
On the walking trail?
Oh, yeah.
Or everything. Um, right now the weather's holding us up on the trail.
A little wet, isn't it?
It's real wet, so we had to shut the outside down. We're still, we're still doing the inside, so we're, that's going, that's going really good. It's going, going pretty quick, so. We're trying to figure it out because, you know, there's a problem if they go past the deadline and, and the weather related, I mean, y'all understand that. So, we're trying to get that changed a little bit, cause it's, we're gonna run out of time on it. But everything's going pretty good. If we can get the weather to lighten up, dry up.
Last week was the full work week. First full work week we've had in about six weeks.
Oh, sure. Well, outside.
Every time you turn around, you got the holidays or you've got winter weather or a week's worth of rain.
That's what happened. Yeah, it ain't been a full week's work of work since Thanksgiving.
We will tell you that.
For a lot of people.
Especially Justin.
Yeah.
Sidewalk project is at eighty percent and it's down to the state highway department. And, uh, Mark sent it the other day. We are, if we do it, uh, if we get it ready to go, that will be a project to advertise and the weather will be decent once we can get through the advertisement. And then the other thing, I will tell you that, that we had a successful bid opening and the contractor is for the sewer repair or sewer replacement, which is over at Cameo, the one that they built the mobile home pad on top of it. And then, uh, the grinder pump for the lift station down here and that will, we'll have a grinder pump now that'll eat everything from shovel blades to you name it, it'll.
Steve, I had a question. Um, two questions. I got asked today, the timeframe on Church Street being reopened.
Next year.
Well, that's kinda what I said, whenever they get it done.
Actually.
Next year, yeah.
They, uh, they have, they have said that it would probably be the end of twenty twenty-four. They've had, they had, they're, right now, they're, they're doing an electrical shoe fly or interchange and the pole, we had to close Church Street because they were doing power pole replacements and we, they just couldn't have it open. And they have one lane you can get up and down. And, uh, I had calls and people wanting to know why. And I said, well, you ever see a forty foot pole swinging on the end of a cable? You don't wanna be there. You know? Go somewhere else. Uh, the other thing is they have got started, they got the power lines moved on the west end and they're going to do an end around. If you haven't looked back behind up here going up Church Street, about, about on H Street, they're doing a pass back through to that main power line in there. And we, if you've gone down South Zero, you've seen the interlock down there at, at Mazard Road. There, all of it is together. Now, if you got something up on your end up there, they're boring up under Painter Lane to go into that switch yard up there and they were hanging poles over there today. They had traffic scramble with one lane on Painter Lane. So, they're getting ready to do and one of the things that's driving the train is on the big warehouse out here, transformer supply. And they've got enough to get going, but you gotta have power to feed it and you gotta have transformers and in this day and age, no, you, the lead time is out of sight. So, for y'all that've got a substa, you know, subdivision going, you need to make sure you got them. Well, we ran into the same thing with water meters. We had to buy two hundred and then two hundred more water meters. That's, that is the big thing. The real, the real deal I don't think is gonna be near as bad, but you gotta, you gotta go west up beside the Peak Center and, uh, that's understudy. Right now, there is an advertisement in yes, yesterday's Democrat Gazette for the Peak Center Drainage Program. And they are gonna probably bore under the building or whatever to let the flow out. And so, I, I don't know, I didn't look at the specs or anything, but it's from the Fort Smith School Board and so we're off and running on that. And that's about it. We've got pumps and.
Are they gonna end up, uh, switching traffic over on the Frontier Road soon? I saw that they were paving and stuff out there.
That stuff is right now is black base they're putting down. Uh, that'll, they'll probably, the schedule doesn't show it that, they sent us a traffic schedule in there and it shows it to do a lot of work on the lanes before they ever switch it over.
Gotcha.
And, uh, that's, that's basically. that's, that's basically, and the traffic marking, that's the other side, is to keep somebody from getting killed out there. They got the water line across, that water line, that trench that you saw, that was the cha- original nineteen forty-one Chaffey water line that they did the shoe fly on.
Alrighty, Tommy, you got anything?
Sure.
Nothing, Joe? No, just glad to be here, huh?
Absolutely.
Alrighty, nobody's from the public here, so I'm guessing they don't have a comment, so. With that being said, Mr. Ron, would you do the honors?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor say aye. Folks, have a great day, God bless Barling.